Row, Kyle.
Mayor, I'm Bill.
Here.
Mayor, Bill.
Here.
Alderman, Bud.
Here.
Alderman, Greg.
Here.
Alderman, Kathy.
Here.
Alderman, Morgan. City Attorney, Harry Hurst.
Here.
City Mayor, Senator.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of the meeting on September the 10th, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve? Any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. There's nothing listed under proclamations or recognition of -- recognition of citizens. Item five, communication from inner city administrator, James Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have to report is we have hired a new finance director who will be beginning on October the 21st. Her name is Christina Matthews. She has 15 years of experience in finance and accounting in the private sector. So this is going to be a transition to the public sector, but I don't think she'll have any trouble with it. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting from Carson Newman College. And, of course, we interviewed her, the mayor interviewed her, and we feel real comfortable moving forward with her. Alderman, Bud, Alderman, Greg, and I attended the governor's conference last week. It was my first one. They were veterans of it, and it was a new experience for me. Like anything you go to, there were good speakers and bad speakers, and you met some interesting people, and I, you know, I think we, you know, we made some good contacts down there. Property tax notices should be going out this week. May have went out today. If not, anticipate them going out tomorrow. And so the counties go out first, and as soon as they put theirs out, like yesterday, my understanding was the county's was going to go out yesterday and ours was going to go out today. So hopefully those are on schedule. Along that same note, I put the interviewing of the applicants for a part-time receptionist to work during the tax season on hold. Jessica sent me an email yesterday morning saying that she is intending to return to work on the 14th. And so if so, then there's no need to fill a part-time position. She's supposed to call me tomorrow, and we're going to talk about it. Chief Schulz got in contact with Progression, and they are going to, and may have already, I'm not sure, but hopefully this week they're going to work it into their schedule this week, to work on the traffic light at North Street. They're going to reconfigure the sequence on the changing of the light. Instead of having the turn arrow go first, they're going to let the light turn green first to allow free flow of traffic. So people want to turn left if they can, or go straight, or whatever, and then have the left turn arrow later. And I do think that was their idea, and I think that's a good idea. I think that will help move the traffic. And, of course, just as we discussed at the workshop, there's a limited number of options to what you can do down there. I think this is, I think this is a good step, and I think this will help. I don't think there is a perfect solution that's going to completely alleviate a little bit of congestion backup down there between the trains and the new configuration. You're just going to have a little bit of that happen during rush hour. And I think sadly, at the end of the day, once we've done this, it's probably going to be about all you can do. And so it's like anywhere, you know, once it reaches its peak performance and we've done all we can do technically, it's just going to be people having to leave a little earlier. And I know that's not what people like to hear. They want to go back to the way it used to be. And it's, you know, that's the stakes, it's not going to let that happen. That's all I got.
Dr. James. Okay, appointment of boards. Just want to announce that the Newport Fire Department has appointed as their representative, Bobby Knight, to serve on the Fire Civil Service Board. Congratulations, Bobby. Tim, with Parks and Recreation, and on behalf of him and the Parks and Rec Board, they've asked me to appoint Bill Buddha to continue, Jill Sweetin to be added. Whose position does she take?
Miss Grooms.
Okay, Miss Diane Grooms. And the leadership class will be replacing Gary Hammond's position. Is that correct? So I'll make that appointment for you, that they be able to serve on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item seven is Tanner Preservation Alliance. Anyone here to give a report on their behalf?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Carlene asked me to give the, remind the Board of Aldermen again of the meeting that is to be held at Newport Utility Building on Tuesday, October the 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. I think they've sent letters out to various preservationists over the region, Dr. West, Knox Design Center, Knox Heritage, and the Design Center in Knoxville. And so I'm going to give out these, she brought them by my office, to remind you. And I'll give each one of you a flyer.
Thank you.
And this, this one is open to the general public. We need to have some type of open dialogue and make some kind of decision, good or bad, about the Tanner building and what they propose to do with it. Funds that we're trying to obtain, I would like to know, you know, either you are or you are not going to support it or help us with it. So we're going to have an open forum. Anyone that has questions, you can submit them to Carlene or present them that night. That's all I know right now. She just stopped by and asked me to do this for her. She had to do touchy.
Thank you. There's no old business, moving to new business. Item nine. A is the consideration of first reading of ordinance 2013-17, amendment to substitute the adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2013-2014.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Hurst has that ordinance in hand. Again, just to recap briefly, the state, we submitted our budget to the state, the numbers were all good, everything balanced to their satisfaction, but they had changed the format that they wanted the ordinance to be in from last year's. We resubmitted one on the exact, in the exact same format as it was done last year, but they had, unbeknown to me and any of the staff that was here, that they had changed the format since last year that they wanted it presented in. And so they requested it be changed to the four, new format and amended. And so that's, we have done.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may read the caption of the ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2013-17, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, amending ordinance 2013-16, adopting the annual budget for the city of Newport, and ordinance 2013-14, adopting the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and substituting this ordinance as adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Item B is consideration of resolution 2013-16, general, yes.
Excuse me, if we could back up. Of course, it's my understanding, we voted or agreed to have a call meeting in two weeks to pass this on.
I believe it's the 22nd.
The 22nd. And, of course, that will be the second reading, and we'll have a public hearing prior to that meeting.
That's great.
On that ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, back to item B. Any discussion on that or a motion to approve? That's the tax anticipation.
Now, that's, that's the refunding, that's the refinancing.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The two variable rate notes into fixed rate.
Right, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item C, consideration of the Johnson Control Proposal.
Of course, y'all saw the presentation from Johnson Control. Their representatives are here tonight, if you have any questions or whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make the motion the week's end.
I'll say. I want to listen, have a look.
Well, what, I mean, I, you've got to come up as is proposed now. You're going to, it's going to cost $300,000 upfront. And so that's monies that we will have to put into the project on the front end. And so you've got, the only monies that you have available to play with on this would be the monies that were borrowed to purchase the properties downtown. Now, we took, you took a $1.6 million note, $9,600 went for the closing costs and came out of that. We have drawn down $819,717 of that, which leaves $750,000 that you have not tapped into. Now, I only budgeted to pay the interest on the $819,717 that we have borrowed to this point. From what you have spent so far, you still have $465,782 that is unspent. Now, the monies to tear down the two buildings down here are going to come out of that. The asbestos removal is going to come out of that. There has been some other projects that you all have talked about wanting to look at doing. We've got the roof that needs to be put on, the building over here that was going to come out of that. If you spend $300,000 of this on that, that's going to leave you $165,000 to spend without drawing any more down. Now, certainly you can draw more down, but if you do, it's not in the budget. The interest, the interest payment is not in the budget. So, you know, that's, that's your, as far as your options for cash at hand, that's, that's where you're going to, you're going to have to draw out of that money one way or the other if you decide to move forward to this project.
With permission?
Yep.
We talked about $300,000 as the cash payment. You would need to finance the rest of it. I just hope, I don't want that to be understood on.
Oh, yeah, but we had to, what I was saying was.
Yes, sir.
We were going to have to come up with $300,000 upfront.
Yes, sir.
And then the other was, is funded through the savings. 15 years, it's in the package that they gave out.
Yes, sir.
It's through 15 years, you're making payments on the other. It's $800,000 project. And so you're, you know, the next 15 years, you're making payments, I've got it right here, on the rest, the balance, the 500, roughly 500,000 remaining. And the premise is that the savings that you have in efficiency, on your energy savings, pays the payment. I mean, that's, you know, that's the entire focus of the project. The payment's $42,900 a year, and they estimate that by year six, it's, it's in the black. Of course, in the front, it's got, you know, the $11,508 upfront that offsets the next one, two, three, four, five years in the red that it doesn't pay for itself.
And then on year number 16, you would just realize those savings as a city. So after the debt's paid off, all the savings from energy spend would just go right back to the city.
So.
15 years to pay for itself.
I mean, for you to complete the project.
Eight, eight months from the time, from now till the time it would be completed.
And there's some seasonal considerations.
What's concerned me, we got Community Center.
It's, it's going to have to be done.
It's got to be done. It's 30, it's been there 38 years.
1978, that's the original unit that's end of life cycle, past end of life cycle for.
If it goes down, we'll have to frame the price to get, that's, I mean, it'd be y'all's pleasure. We might want to blow that bond or something later, get started and then figure out another course of money if we have.
We got the money, there it starts.
But we're going to need some to finish these projects.
Well, you've got, you've got another.
What is it?
$770,683 you can draw down on the, on the note that you.
With the $165,000 that we've got left, that will take care of these buildings here.
Well, you've still got other projects.
I know. And put the roof on that building over there.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's just $9,000. I have to tie this building down.
I've got the numbers here, yeah, something like that. But you've also got the property acquisitions down here at the, the Mill Park.
Right.
The Riverwalk. We've got two properties that we're going to have to negotiate on down there. It's got to come out of this money.
We could use this right now, like you say, then we'll have to borrow another. But I think it's a, their presentation's very good. I believe the energy savings look real good. And I think we need to do it. My first.
Do we have a motion?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? Row, Kyle.
Mayor, Bill.
Yes.
Alderman, John.
Oh.
Alderman, Greg.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman, Kathy.
Yes.
Alderman, Morgan.
Three, one. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the consideration of reconstruction of the NUV board members? Any discussion or a motion or? If there's no motion, then the discussion will be over due to lack of a motion. Item E, consideration of the NUV signalization money. Or I guess, you know, for the last few meetings, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings concerning the signalization, and it's been laid out, the options that the city has with T-Dot and so forth. Does any council member have any discussion on what we need to do about this?
Mayor, I think we, since this, this signalization's not going to be done, it's not going to be done tomorrow, it's not going to be done in six months. I make a motion that we just hold this thing for a year at least, so it won't, I mean, you, you know, these people have the red light. Until it comes up, we'll, we'll, I think we should deal with it when, when the Tennessee Department of Transportation does their, start doing their work, we need to deal with it then. I mean, we don't want to, and that's, that's my motion.
Just a little discussion on that. Since the, in the meeting with T-Dot, they did indicate that we had, I guess, passed the window for approval to do those lights at this point in time. So what Nathan will be doing is bringing that back up after first of the year in 2014 for approval, which he sees no problem with getting approval. Then he indicated that the project wants the state approves it. Would take two years to completion on those two lights. But now, just remember that if they follow through with that completion of those two lights, that light either has to come down, or the city's going to have to fund another one, the $200,000 or less, to put lights back in, or four-way stop. So, and everybody, we've explained several times those options, so. With that thought in mind, Johnny's got a motion. Do we have a second?
Give me your motion again, Johnny.
What?
Let's hear your motion again.
My motion is to hold off on the signalization on the red light down at the Jefferson Avenue. No matter what I say, option one takes it down. Option two takes it down. We've already voted on option one until the city in Newport gets, if that's what this council wants to do, put a red light up there until this city gets financially able. Right now, this city is not financially able to spend $200,000 down there to do that. I think we should put it on hold for at least a year. Or a year, I won't say at least, I'll say a year.
Well, I think we're voting on something that we're going to have to turn around and vote back again in January of next year, or February of next year, if the state puts it back and forths.
Yeah, once, once they get approval, then they're, they're probably going to wonder, which direction are we going to go?
But by then, will there be state monies available? Do you feel that's with that?
No. Not likely, because their study indicated the light needed to come down because it was not up to speed as far as liability for the city. Just like this one over here, this single one over here. They, the, the state has come up with a safety plan. That, that's what this basically is. That's why they're getting safety money to pay for it, because it makes downtown Newport travel safer. So that, that's why they've got safety money in this. And in order for the, the state to spend the money on it, the plan has to be followed, just like I indicated before. At one point in time, I thought we ought to take out the island over there. But if we took the island out now, after the state's safety group has said that's what needs to be there to make that intersection safe, and we come along and take it out, then we're going to be liable. Now, if anybody pulls up there with the island there, if they shoot across to try to go left, then they've basically broke the law. It's safety is what the problem is.
T-Dot couldn't come back with a different proposal next year, would it?
No.
No. It'll be the same proposal.
If we pass this, this proposal, we're going to have to do one or two things. That's, option one, option, if you don't.
Option one, option two, already been presented to us, and it's already been studied. Option one takes the red light down, I've said and said and said. Option two takes it down. But sooner or later, the red light's going to have to come down.
You just got through saying that the money's not available. They're going to propose it again next year, back to us. Who's to say they're going to propose the same thing back to us?
He, he more or less indicated it'd be the same proposal, because that's the study.
Not going to be a state.
That's what the study was.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the study was for the red light of Mayor Avenue and the one down here at the bank. That leaves a single light down at Jefferson Avenue that's not tied to a fiber optic cable. If I'm not misunderstanding, Mr. Buck, we should just isolate the Jefferson Avenue project and not move forward on it until we get the finalized plan from T-Dot. They're not going to change their plans for what they want to do with the light and the signalization for those two, because it's been studied too many times, and that's the final study's best result.
The only way, the only way, if, if, now, if the city in Newport, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm firmly believer not doing it, I'm firmly believer, take it down. State Tennessee says take it down. Heard me and heard me and heard me say it. If the city in Newport spends $200,000 for that red light that's down there, we are liable for that light because the state of Tennessee says, take it down. It's covered up for a year and a half, and nothing's said about it.
Yes. Could you come up here for, for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Gary Greg. I talked to the state over it, and that was their recommendation. But according to them, they done the study outside of what's been asked for.
Why didn't they tell us?
And so now you're saying they're going to put, you want to put it off a year, they need to do a new study.
I'm going to change my nomination. I say we take it down.
Because according to the words that was presented by the board, this was not going to be an option no more. And we, we fought this and fought this and fought this for several years now. They say there's no money. Our city man just spoke out of his own mouth that there's money there that you've got property to buy with. Why can you not purchase a lot? Are you more concerned with a house on the side of the river, or are you concerned with the businesses that's still in town?
Well, what basically, what I'm concerned about is the safety factor of what the state says. And I've talked to you on the phone, whether I agree with what the state says or not, that's a state highway. And they, they make the call on what can go up there and what can't.
According to the state, the city has the option for that red light. They cannot come, according to the state, they told me out of their own mouth, that they will not force that red light to come down, that fall upon the city.
Ah, that wasn't what's told to me. If the red light either comes down, or a new one, a new one has to go up, a new.
You cannot get the, the grant money for the other two lights unless that light comes down.
That's right, because that's.
Now, let's go right where the, where it's at. And it was told that it wasn't about money, but it was about money, to get the grant money. Now, I'm all for getting money to help the town, but when you're going to destroy some businesses, no, I'm against it. Because that red light's been there longer than I've been alive. My dad run the dry cleaners right there in that empty lot for Ropside James's. And they, it was, they, it was there back in the 60s. That red light was there then, why does it need to come down now?
Because times has changed, Gary.
Times has not changed. The traffic, when they done the study, the traffic was not full like they are during school hours.
No, I, I probably don't agree with their, the way they did their study.
And it means it's wrong.
Because school was not in session. But this is, this is the plan that's been given to the city in Newport by the state.
And I think the city should turn it down and seek for another plan. Because you're, you're, you've got businesses sitting here that are, that hadn't come after working all day to try to fight against this. And we shouldn't have to be fighting against one another. It's about this town prospering. And I've not seen no prospering when we're having to bicker with one another.
I'm not.
You should be thinking about what you have and what you don't have.
Mr. Greg, let me ask you one question. Can you, it's a yes or no answer. Do you have problems, you're talking about, you're talking about, we can't get out, if you take the red light down, it's a yes or no answer. Do you have problems with the red light getting out? Yes or no? Do you want to answer?
You can get out.
That's the only time you get out.
I don't do it because of me, because I'm out of job. You've got a husband and a wife and.
And you know what, you know what our Alderman said? He says you're young, you can get out there, you can hunt another job. Now, that's what we got on the board.
You say that to me on the phone. You're a man.
Okay, hey.
I just want, I just, I think you need to be fair. You've got people here, you've got a lady right here's got a business downtown, the body shop downtown, they say they need it. Movie store needs it. Plane Talk says they have to have it.
I think what the council's trying to decide, if they can afford $200,000 to put a new one in.
That light is not going to be $200,000. We don't need no crosswalk there.
You have to.
All we had to have is a light.
It's a requirement because of handicap accessibility. That's their, we, we can't make up the plan that the state calls for, what they call for, that's their highway, that's a state highway.
So if I call the state back, you're telling me they're going to tell me they have to be a crosswalk there?
Yes, sir.
Yes, they will.
They're sure, it's in the, the written plan.
The man you're talking to needs to be here if he's going to be guts enough to tell you.
Well, they, they told me plane in Knoxville.
No, I think, it's, that's a state highway, I don't own City Newport. Whatever the state said, I think we ought to do it.
So you're saying the city, you're, you're stating right now that the city does not have control over taking down them lights? You answer it.
Yeah, I, I, State of Tennessee says take it down, it's not us.
No, you're saying you don't have the power to leave that light up?
I, I wouldn't leave it up, but I'd take it down.
And you didn't answer the question.
Here's, here's the basis. The, the whole situation is, the state says it's substandard. It puts the city at risk to have a light up like that now. And since they, the plan has been put into effect, this is what they're telling us that will make the city a safer place to travel, red light wise.
All right. So have you got some land money that you're not buying land with, that you cannot purchase that light?
That's up to the council.
He just stated it, and I see the money there.
It's up to the council, the voters, they want to spend it.
The money, the money is not there. The money, well, that's.
The money, well, that's what I, the money would have to be borrowed to do the light. We just spent, we got $465,000 is what we've got. We just spent $300,000 to do this upgrade on all the city's building. That leaves $165,000. And we've got to buy these properties, we've got to tear down two buildings right here and we've got to buy two properties down there for the mill site, it's got nothing to do with houses. It's got to do with building a park down here on the River Walk.
Well, they said that, that property was on hold.
Not the River Walk. We're not buying any property downtown to build a library. The money was borrowed to buy property to build a library and that's not moving forward.
So then there's money there to purchase?
We just spent $300,000 of it to upgrade city properties. If, if they want to do it, you're going to have to borrow the money.
Okay.
But the money is not there.
There's just one thing I want to say, with all these business people downtown, and I know firsthand how it is to be a family-owned business. And it's hard. It's hard with the way times is now, as the economy, the way it is and everything. We don't have anything else to leave. This town's really drying up and it's drying up very fast.
Well, what, what we had talked about, what the mayor and I had talked about and what we, I thought we were going to look at here tonight was postponing this till the state got ready to move with their project and maybe then we'll be in better shape financially. We've got some properties downtown here, we're looking, it may be selling. And that, if we can sell those things, would come close to paying for a red light. But right now, if we say now we're going to put a light up and we move forward with it, we're going to have a new light down there and the state is not even going to be doing anything yet. And if the state's not even going to do it for two years after the first of the year, you're looking at not having to have a red light up for two and a half years. So I thought that's what we were going to do here tonight, is just leave it alone for a year and a half, we'll be in better shape financially. Do nothing, leave it alone.
What James says, make us a motion.
He made a motion, you made a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnny's got a motion.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. He was first to make a motion.
I make a motion that we postpone it until we get financially able, if that's what they want to do, you know?
Which is what James just said too.
James just said, yeah, exactly what we, we talked about that.
Any discussion?
Me and James, not the alderman.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no.
And I, and that was Johnny's idea. He came to me with that idea this morning. He said that if the state's not going to do it for at least two years, then we don't need to do anything. We just wait till we have to do something and then maybe we can do something. And I told him, I thought that was a great idea. And that was Johnny's idea.
Tim, I'm sorry, James.
And so, and that was what I thought we were going to try to look at doing, was just not do, leave it alone, just leave it alone. And nobody, the light doesn't come down, we spend no money, there's no added liability until they, until they start the re-signalization, we take no added liability. The added liability attaches when the new lights go up and that's the only light left and we've not addressed it. Then, what the state has said is, the way it was relayed to me, now, I didn't talk to them, but I talked to somebody that did, the way it was relayed to me is that, once the new lights are all done, we need to make a, we've got to do one of the other. Because then, liability attaches because you've got an antiquated light up and all new systems and then all the liability's on us. So, of course, the way, just for the record, the way this thing got stirred back up again, Connie was trying to find a way to get those lights fixed and it not cost us anything. And he was under the impression that NUB had monies available, that they could put the light up and it, it would be at no cost to us. But what we found out at the workshop was, that was not the case. And so, that went out the window. And that's how this got stirred back up. You know, we always end up with, why y'all bring this back up? Well, it was brought back up because Connie thought he had found a way to put the red light back that was not going to cost the city any money. That's how it got brought back up. It wasn't brought back up, well, we need to hurry and get that light down. That was never the issue. The issue was Connie thought he'd found the perfect solution. And I told him, I said, buddy, if you can pull that off, you'll be a hero because you're going to make, he found the perfect solution. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. And that's how it got back on the agenda. Not because we just wanted to go back and, and get everybody upset and angry again. That certainly is never our, our goal. Our goal's to try to make everybody as happy as we can. And Connie thought he had found the way to do that, it did not pan out. So I think y'all made a good decision.
Tim.
I was just going to add too that the purchase of the properties is for easements to cross those properties and not actually buying properties at this time.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say just one thing about that? You said that the state said it would be safer to take that light down.
Yeah.
It is not safer when you're, when you don't have a light there trying to get out of that place. It's not safe. I don't know who said that, but I use that, I use that cleaner all the time. It is not safe.
But that's the state, you know?
I understand that, I'm just a citizen here.
Right.
It is not safer not to have it.
I would like to see us be able to buy a new light to go up there. That, that's my intention. Whether or not we ever get to pay for it, I don't know. But that would be, because I feel for all those businesses. But the state says, well, they give us the options, we've preached the options that they've given us for months now, so.
But it's not safe.
Right. And I agree with you. Okay, item F, consideration of taking bids for two trucks for the parks and rec and the recycling department. Do we have a motion to approve allowing those bids to, to be let?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Have one item under the consent agenda, the roadblock for the Copp County High School swim team on November the 16th, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? I hear none. Item 10, under bids, consideration of bids for the asbestos removal on the demolition projects.
Okay, Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, we, we, one of the things we're going to have to do to take down the two property, the buildings on the two properties next door is we have to do the asbestos removal before we can do the demolition. And so, we've already, we've let the bid on the demolition, but we've got to do the asbestos removal, abatement, whatever kind of terminology you want to use, before we can move forward. We received four bids, as you can see in your packet, from Health and Associates, $9,381, from Luke Green Company Incorporated, $4,800, from NEO Corporation, $6,985, and from S&amp;F Environmental Consulting, $5,835 and 10 cents.
And I think all four of these are certified asbestos removal companies, correct?
Yes, sir. And they're all, from what we can find out, they're all reputable and good companies. Of course, as, the same as with the demolition, they will still be required to furnish all proper documentation and sign a contract that Mr. Hurst will draw up.
That it's all been removed?
Well, before we put them to work, we're going to make them sign a contract, yeah, yes, sir.
But now, will they be some kind of proof from the company that does it? Does the state have to certify that it's all gone or anything like that, or?
There'll be, I think that you have to do a, a post-inspection.
Okay, so there'd be a certified person?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're going to be liable if there's something left.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
I'll make a motion for the chief.
E. Luke Green?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion for the $4,800, E. Luke Green. Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? I hear none. Any comments from council? Any comments from citizens? Do we have a motion adjourned?
I might have.
Hold it, hold it, yes.
Earlier, you guys were talking about the consulting. And I heard $300,000, $800,000, is that a bid? Or is it some kind of work for that amount of money? I haven't been here in the past and just happened to be here at the last workshop and it came up. And I'm just curious about that.
The Johnsons.
Johnsons, yeah.
We, we came, I believe it was in March, and, and talked about this. We fall under professional services as far as the state's concerned, like an architectural firm would be. But then, the heavy parts of this, we bid out, like the mechanicals and things like that. We did a, a bid for those with, with multiple companies here. So we were not bid out, you chose to use us as professional services, but we bid the services out.
It's for heat systems up in the community set.
Did the council approve the bids that you prepared or did you guys select to go bid?
Yes, sir, the latter. We...
Were they involved in the bid process whatsoever?
They, they were just involved in choosing us and then, if the mayor requests, we can turn the results of those, those bids over, but they were not involved in the actual bids.
It sounded like a lot of money was being spent, I didn't hear the thing about a bid process. So you guys performed the bid process?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I have one second?
You sure can.
And I don't want to cause controversy because I've been asked by the state, I'm comfortable to ask to get something on the record in the council meetings, the only time it's actually recorded. And like I said, I'm not trying to cause trouble or anything, I just need to send in a report and I need to ask a couple questions that they want me to verify. I need to verify whether their check number 030831, dated April 27th, 2011, is this Johnny Bug's actual stamp or his signature? I don't know the answer already, but I have to ask Johnny whether, John, whether this is his actual signature or his stamp on his check.
Come on in.
A moment, a moment, I'm in a situation.
No, is it your signature or your stamp?
You can have your statement, but at the meeting, you cannot ask that question.
Okay. Well, they asked me to do it. I couldn't actually put it on the docket because the people that I need to be here were not going to be here. But they asked me to actually get it on record. Do you suggest that I put it on your document for next month, actually? Because it has to be recorded and on record to say that's, if that's the stamp or the signature.
Well, what difference make? I mean, if it's a stamp, it's still being my signature.
Because this was the check to Kenny Morgan to purpose 136 Blazer Street, which was for $17,325, which was actually not approved by council. And that whoever signed that check, which Scott signed it and he's already gone, would be, would come up into my report that I sent in. So basically, I mean, just to break it down for you, to be honest with you, it's saying, did you know this check was being sent out? Did you sign it or they stamp it? Or was this Scott stamped it?
Mine twice had been signed. It wouldn't make any difference if it was signed by a stamp. I've got, these people sign my name with a stamp here for checks, it don't matter.
In this particular case, it would matter because it say you knew about this before the fact, without other council members knowing.
Hey, this is not an inquisition. I don't think this is the proper place to, to question that. That would be...
You put it in court, I, I, I will say, you say my name on it. I mean, I'm, I'm not here to be, I feel like you're harassing me.
No, I don't, I don't consider that harassment.
Just speak your piece.
Okay. That's fine. Because I think, I think for today, I'll be done and we'll handle this a different case because I seem to think everybody from actually the citizens are actually getting railroaded tonight. And the attitudes of the council is, is a lot different than it has been. So we'll, we'll drop it there for the day. I think that there's a lot of hostility and I don't want to be part of it.
Okay.
That's ridiculous.
Any other citizens?
I just want a clarification. What did you all decide about the light at North Street, right here?
The, the one at the railroad tracks?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be timed to have a longer green. Chief, would you explain that better, please?
Somebody's going to get killed there.
Well...
It's bad.
The signalization is set up now to, you have what's called a leader green, a signal. It turns the signal on first. There's, we have talked with Progression, with their engineer and with the guy that comes up here to do it, and we feel like right now, the best thing we can do is give a green ball first and then what's called a trailer signal. After the green ball gives an opportunity for the traffic to clear out, that'll give the opportunity for the right-hand lane to be able to move forward. And then it'll still give a left-hand turn signal post-green ball. So it's kind of just flopping it from what it's doing right now and hopefully, with a green light, the traffic will move on forward. Because if you've got three there waiting to go and the turn signal comes on, if they're not going to turn left, they're not going to go anywhere until that green ball comes on.
Right.
So it's going to turn it over and then hopefully give the traffic an opportunity to flow and then still have an opportunity to have a green turn signal.
It would have to be a noticeable difference.
That's, that's the goal right now.
Okay. Did you understa...
My office is done with that?
Yes.
And sometimes I have to go all the way to City Park where I can turn around and come back before I can get a hell of that.
We believe this...
You're going to get killed.
Yeah, we believe it'll make a lot of difference. Now, whether it will completely stop all the backup, probably not because it was backed up even before the new lights were put up. But hopefully this will help.
And I told my research, the lights may, maybe it would be advantageous if you put that sign up prior to coming across the bridge, that if it's clear. And I, I sit there every day and watch this. It's amazing, no one has got killed in super cities like this. And people still just stop. And so, I think that's it all day, every day.
Nobody, nobody can be required to make a right turn on red. After coming to a complete stop, you can make a right turn on red. There, where, I'm not going to eat that sign.
No, I'm just saying, whatever the sign is saying here, you could also put one prior to the bridge because by the time you get there, you really aren't noticing it. You're not noticing it because people are standing there, sitting there, so I know they're going to notice it. But if you had a one prior to crossing that bridge and then the one at the railroad track, it may keep, I mean, it's just a dead, you don't need to study, all you need to do is just come over and sit in my office and watch it yourself.
Right.
It, it's, it's bad.
It would probably require the state to approve that, wouldn't it? Since it's a state highway. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay, thank you all.